Wanted to spend some time reflecting on the community comment that we received on the Southeast Junior High Band, uh Orchestra Lessons, excuse me, and the proposed cut there in staffing, but also the Earth Science, Earth, and I'm sorry, I'm not saying that correctly, but the-
Earth and Space Science.
Earth and Space Science. So, um, we had asked just for some updates, and I think Steve, you and the team have done some work on that.
I have. Uh, you got the memo, uh, that came out, uh, and, and, uh, Matt and the Secondary Admin Team were, uh, very, uh, supportive in this process. Essentially what we did is, you know, I, I shared with them, and you know this, uh, we just reiterated with them that, uh, the process with you has been very productive because we've had room for dialogue, and whether it's SFAs or, uh, Success Centers or Attendance Support Busing, it was very apparent over the four and a half months that we sat at the table and talked to each other where the pain points were for you, where those, those heart stops were, and so that allowed us, through an iterative nature, to continue to go back and look for opportunities, um, where we could make adjustments to the budget, uh, reduction. Uh, one of the things that they've struggled with at the secondary level is they are still building a master schedule, and so it's still in flux out there, and we continue to put pressure on them to say where, 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 and, and, uh, as part of that, uh, they looked at where the numbers were at. Obviously, they came back and said, well, if we're trying not to riff and we're trying to balance these sections, this looks like an opportunity for us because there are retirements tied to it, and we can make these changes, and so we brought those back to you, but we didn't have the opportunity to have the conversation at the table like this, uh, as we did with the other elementary cuts. So, one of the things that I was doing was listening at that last meeting, uh, to where the, the stress was in the system and where those pain points were, and although I didn't ask you that formal question, I really didn't want to put you on the spot at the board table, um, is where are your heart stops? Um, we, we felt we heard that. We felt that was pretty apparent, uh, so we were able to go back and sit down with them and say, okay, we're really talking about five sections spread over seven thousand kids at six comprehensive secondary schools. So where is there an opportunity for us to look for other points, uh, in the process where we could look at section reduction, perhaps in a core content area where there are multiple sections, uh, that are out there that allows us to, to, uh, make a squeeze somewhere else in the system so that releases some pressure, uh, for instance, in our, our orchestra program in Southeast and in our Earth Science, Earth and Space Science Program at the, uh, junior high level. The team was able to come back with that, uh, and, and, uh, were able to, uh, give us those five sections from, uh, other locations in the system, because they're still going through, and you heard Matt say that at the last meeting, oh, that one's wrong, that's actually now half math and half science. So it's still in play right now, so, uh, what we did was when we sat back down with them, we said, don't get so granular with the point this and point that. Help me understand which curricular areas we're looking at, uh, and, and then from that, can we get the nine FTE out of there? Had a good conversation with them, yes, we can. Uh, can we do it without having to make a reduction in, in the orchestra program? Can we do it without making a reduction in the Earth and Space Science Program? And the answer is yes. So what we bring back to you is that continued reduction of nine, which we know is part of that budget reduction process, uh, but, uh, as of today, we're not looking at those. Uh, now, one thing I did ask them to do, because it's come up as part of the process, and so we're still gathering that data, uh, and, and I, uh, I know I get questions from outside, but I think also some of the board members, if they didn't ask the question correctly, did indirectly, um, to ask questions about, well, what do we offer right now? Junior high to junior high to junior high, high school to high school to high school. How many kids are in the band elective suite, the orchestra elective suite, the choir elective suite? What does that look like? How many students, how many courses are offered? What's the per pupil ratio? Uh, because there were some issues of equity that came up. Uh, we're gonna bring that back to you. We're still gathering that data, and it'll be for this year, but we can look at it for next year as we move on. Uh, because, and, and I know some members of the community brought that up to us, um, both in some emails that came to you and some conversation that they, we, they had with me, so we'll report that back to you when we get all that data, but, um, that's where we're staying today. Uh, we feel much better about it. We hope you do. Uh, I know, at least from email traffic, uh, I've had some dialogue with folks who are really concerned about this. Uh, I think the word is out, if you will, because I've seen the email traffic, uh, and these two subject areas in particular drop off substantially in the last four or five days, um, since we've had those conversations with people, uh, in our group of external stakeholders.
Question, um, thank you for that. Um, so I get that the final schedules are not finished. There's still some final counts and registrations and stuff to go through, so if we approve this next Tuesday, um, is there something else that could shift after we approve the budget next Tuesday with this information in front of us? I mean, could something else shift that would cause concern in the community or, or parents or students, um, about something being cut or reduced?
We don't really don't want it to shift anymore after that.
Okay.
We'd like to start setting the master schedule.
I, I get it. I mean, I just put it-
This would give the principals, you know, their FTE they need to work with, so-
Okay.
They haven't been able to start the process of building out that schedule. They just have course requests. They're waiting to know exactly how many FTE they have, and then once they have that, then they can actually go into the schedule.
Okay.
Where they'll build the schedule, build kids' schedules.
So no, no surprises?
Right, exactly.
After this is, if, if this is approved next Tuesday, there'd be no more surprises?
Yeah, we'll have some fixed variables to start with.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
I would say nothing out of the ordinary in terms of surprises. I think the parents who have been through the process know that kid requests don't always result in, you know, those courses being run.
Right, their kids have some elective, just like any year, and they don't go or something that way, but this at least allows us, I mean, there would be no major shifts in, you know, reduction of, uh, you know, core content FTE to dramatically increase class size. We have a really good target of what our class size will look like based on this, and of course, till we run, build those schedules, we don't know the exact numbers of what each of those sections are. We can figure an average of, you know, twenty-nine or thirty, but we don't know, one might be thirty-three, one might be twenty-eight or something, so.
So, that's kind of exactly what I was gonna ask, just because, you know, you see science there at all the high schools, and I was wondering, is that, you know, just general, science class is gonna get a little bit bigger, or is there some elective science class, and is each one of those reflecting of like one or two classes as opposed to a whole science teacher? Like generally, it's just-
We just had some opportunities with turnover in science staff, um, from either resignations or retirements, and so, uh, what you'll see as a result, yeah, are, um, potential limited increases in some of those areas, but, um, you know, another one we talked about tonight can be, um, how we've done some sheltered instruction classes before and things like that, that, you know, are we, you know, having to do those in a group format with the regular science class now, so, um, some- the thing I would say could still change would be if we'd get like a, you know, a late resignation or something on that end, and a building principal would make a decision then to say, well, I thought I was gonna staff a half a science teacher and a half a math teacher, but now I have another half-time science teacher, leaving some of it post a full-time science, and so some of those things can, of course, so it lists those core content areas now, or some of those content areas now, but that may not be the case. But they know what their FTE assignment from Chase and I is and what they'll be able to fill, so.
There's always disruptions. I always said, you know, it's part of their-
TLC positions are still being added.
Yeah, I'm like, it's April, it'll change in May, it's gonna change in June, but that's just every, every, you know.
That's kind of at the, the building level to work out each little individual piece to get the record.
Yeah, um, can, can you explain the, uh, inner district job fair? And how often do we have that, and, uh, how that kind of looks into the whole?
Sure. Uh, well, this is the first time we've done it this way, and based on how it went on Saturday, we hope it becomes an annual thing, and-
It, it's already happened.
It already happened. It happened this last Saturday, and it was part of our overall, um, uh, staffing calendar that we put out back in December for the spring. It had all of our different events on it, and it changed when the budget came out. Instead of being just an internal transfer event that we're gonna open up more broadly, we utilized it as a way to give our teachers more voice and figure out where they were going to be next year if they were displaced from their classroom. And so we set it up and, um, sent out invitations to the teachers. There are about twenty-three.
Before you do that, can I just share this? So what he's talking about is in the past, yeah, I guess I should sit down. If, if School A was down two sections, we would know that they were down two sections. We'd have a conversation with the building principal. They'd say, okay, I'm down a third and a second grade, so it's Chase and Brady that are going, and then Amy and Matt and Chase and I would sit down and say, okay, it looks like there's a second grade opening over here and a third grade opening over here, and we would decide for those teachers where they were going. And, and, uh, because of the boundary changes this year, and because there were so many FTEs in play, we had a lot more displacements than we would have in a normal year, and so one of the questions that, that just naturally gave rise to this, when was it? Maybe in August, September we started talking about, from the, as a result of the, the attendance zone changes, which is why he developed that, that calendar and put this in there, you know, and we started, uh, that, that mental construct of giving teachers more voice in the process, because maybe I've been teaching at the primary level and I wanna teach at the intermediate level. Maybe I, I've just recently moved and I would much rather geographically be located here rather than here, but those things were unknown to us before. I mean, we might know it because maybe the principal had a conversation with the teacher, but it was anecdotal. I mean, it was more by happenstance that we knew it than by deliberation, and so this was really, uh, a quest to provide teachers a greater opportunity to control their own destiny and, and, and tell us that directly, so. That, that's really different than what we did before.
And, so, thanks, I apologize for starting that there.
No, I'm sorry, but you knew the history, so I knew they didn't, so.
Um, and so it provided an opportunity for the teachers to sign up for the buildings they wanted to talk to, and then we brought them in, and we had it scheduled all in one day, twenty to twenty-five minute conversations. They rotated around and, um, visited. There were conversations. We told the principals, these are not interviews. Obviously, there's do's and don'ts, but don't have it structured. We tried to provide as much information about it. It's a relaxed setting. It's about fit. This is a two-way conversation. And then after it, because the district does have placement rights, we asked the principals, okay, what are your preferences? But I also reached out to all the teachers and said, you know, I'm, I'm not gonna have you give me what your top school is 'cause I don't want there to be a false expectation, but I do want you to tell me schools where you don't think you would be a good fit, where you went into it open-minded, but after the conversation, that's just not a fit for you. Um, and then are there any other factors that we might wanna consider? And we got good feedback. Um, Lincoln has a sixth grade section that's a standalone section, and there were some folks who were really interested in going to Lincoln, but after they learned from AM that there was no one to collaborate with, the sixth grade level, they said, you know what? That probably just doesn't match my school's skill set. Will you take me off of that? Um, we had some folks that had been working in the same building, and they carpool to work, and so they said, we don't need to be in the same building, but if at all possible, could you put us in the same building or close together? And, you know, they emailed me that. We had a conversation, and they said, we know this is ridiculous. I said, no, it's not ridiculous, but these are the type of things we wanna know. So we really did try to take all factors into consideration. But we also had to have a place to start, and so we limited it to classroom teachers, and when we did that, it really made it more of an elementary event than anything else. Steve talked about the movement. I mean, overall, if you count the opening of Grant and the move to Hoover, we have about fifty elementary teachers that are changing locations, uh, this year, which that's a, that's a lot of folks.
Yeah.
Um, we only ended up having about twenty-one, twenty-two elementary teachers that came to the event, but we did have a couple of individuals that, because of how staffing shook out at the secondary, were invited to the event because they had certifications that, um, well, were eligible for elementary. We did not invite any of our secondary schools because none of our candidates, except the two that had already been at the, the secondary level, had certifications that matched the, the secondary, uh, positions. And I'm being generic because, I mean, I know it's just us in the room, but technically, it's an open meeting. We haven't really communicated this with the individuals yet, so I apologize that I'm not, yeah. So I'm not going, thank you, going into detail, but we ended up not having one of the secondary people come because we did find an opening at the secondary that matched, um, her endorsements. Well, we said we weren't gonna rep any teachers. We needed to make the placement, and so we weren't gonna put her through the paces if there was only one other place in the district that she could go, and so we made that match. Um, and while I have big hopes that we do expand it further and provide everybody an opportunity, that they're just looking for a change. They weren't displaced, and we'll know earlier. We won't be in a budget crunch going forward, and they can come and show their interest to, to other buildings. We just weren't there yet, so this was the first step. I don't know why it's that big hope, and you might have heard me, remember me talking about when I gave the presentation in March, that we sent out a teacher intention form in January. We had about a hundred teachers that responded and said, hey, yeah, I'd be considered. I'd be interested in considering a different opportunity. And so there are folks out there that wanna stay, but they wanna look at other things, and so I think there is a place for that in the district. But this year, in an unfortunately good way, lent itself for us to try this. Um, that's something we'd never done before because we had these twenty or so teachers that we needed a place, and we wanted to rise in some, some standard process. It might be more detailed than you wanted, uh, Phil, but, um, I, I'm- Steve, you're gonna get me going. I'm really excited. Like, I thought it was very, very good, and Amy was there, and the feedback we've gotten both from the principals and the teachers was fantastic, and really, it's a credit to our principals because the feedback heard from the teachers was the principals made me feel so comfortable. The principals made me feel valued. They really treated it like a conversation. All my team did is we set it up, and then it would, we really depend on our principals to go out there and to generate those feelings, and, um, I don't know if Brady's hearing back, um, but, yeah.
Hormone.
Yeah, I went. I was there. Amy offered me a job. I appreciate that. I applied.
She's a kindergarten next year.
Well, that would be a great break.
Stay in our backyard.
That's right. I, I, I thought it went well, and, uh, I would say probably, just like Chase, uh, about the teachers that were there, um, they were fantastic, got a, you know, great attitude. They were very positive. They came in, they were, you know, professional, sharply dressed, and it did remind me, and I texted Chase this, that, you know, we stood in front of a lot of those younger emerging educators that not very many months ago had woken them to the district, and so I was very appreciative of all of our concerted efforts to not have any rifts. Because it would've been heartbreaking, you know, seeing some of the superstar young teachers that were there and think, my gosh, it would've been such a different conversation had, had we not worked together. So, I have not heard much, you know, it was on Saturday. Uh, I have not received much feedback after that. The teachers that I talked to who were there, it was, it was positive.
Well, and for full transparency, as I said, we haven't told anybody of the replacements yet, so the tune might change tomorrow after folks find out where they're going, right?
So I am second grade.
Yes, you are, but I didn't do that in public before this. Um, but, and hopefully, it's still, it, it remains a very positive, uh, positive experience.
Well, you're going from, I mean, they, these teachers went into it, right, knowing that they're likely being displaced, and it could've been-
A sign.
Next step is you're just being told to retire.
Yeah, right.
I, I think just having that opportunity to weigh in is very important, even if, you know, nobody's not gonna get their first choice, I assume. Because you guys are really good. Uh, but I, I think that's, that's really appreciated to, you know, have the voice heard, and, and it makes the weighing softer for you.
And you mentioned, you said they might not. No, they, they went in knowing they had been displaced, and so we had their principals meet with them initially a week ago Friday, and between that date and Saturday, we communicated with them, I think, five times. And so we tried to be very transparent upfront and say, on Monday, you're gonna get this from me. Okay, we've heard back this, so we're gonna do this. Tomorrow, I'm gonna tell you more details about Saturday. They came on Saturday and we said, hey, we'd really like your feedback on Saturday, and then yesterday was, okay, thank you for that. We're making decisions. We'll call you tomorrow, and then Jane and I are gonna make all the calls tomorrow. So it was also important, not only to give them a voice, but to let them know everything was happening, because they are, they're in limbo. And that's the hardest part when you, when you don't know, and so that was the concerted effort also, was to try to talk to folks along the way.
As far as who was displaced, is that, um, just kind of according to the negotiated agreement and seniority essentially in each building, or do principals have a little more discretion, or?
So it's a, seniority is a factor among many.
Okay.
Right, so we have that list of probably seventy different variables that are to be considered. Um, ultimately, right of assignment resides with the district, uh, and superintendents designated, so that usually is at the building level administration. There's even some language in there in the negotiated agreement, so that's, you know, that's, that's, it's, it's a factor. It certainly wasn't the only one.
Maybe one thing to, to put out there too is that in buildings that knew that, uh, that they were gonna have displacements, uh, there was a pretty active dialogue about it because we had people who stepped up and said, hey, for a variety of reasons, I would be willing to go.
Okay.
Uh, and so we had volunteers from some of our buildings that stepped up and said, it can be me. I'm all right with that. Uh, and so then that took the pressure off others that were in there. Again, you've heard me say this, but, uh, I said it, uh, a couple of times now publicly, and there's another opportunity. We normally don't get resignations until well into July or even August sometimes, and the association was really helpful in, in getting the word out through rep council to the buildings that if you know you're gonna be gone, please turn your resignation in now, because that might be one more person that doesn't have to be displaced, because there'd be nothing worse than either volunteering or involuntarily being displaced, and then you pack up all your stuff and you move it to another building and find out two weeks later that one of your colleagues resigned. Uh, and so if we can avoid doing that, obviously from a climate culture standpoint, from an employee goodwill standpoint, that goes a long way, but we don't know who those people are, and the association was willing to help us reach out with that, and that, that made a, an enormous difference for us. We had more resignations prior to the end of the school year than we've ever had, so that was really helpful in the process too.
Right, and you-
I'm curious, I, I do think about the elementary, um, RAM arrangements, and I know that's, you've been targeting constantly in flux, but there are some classes that are very close to requiring another teacher. Have you factored, factored that in?
We've looked at that. We've also looked at, again, if you look at it from that, that color coding format, there are some that are just over the, the edge, and so, uh, Amy and I have had regular, robust conversations, uh, with our building administrators about where those are at, um, and we did not release, um, all of the FTE that could be available at this time, and that's part of the reason why. Uh, you don't see it on the chart there, but we have some undesignated kindergarteners.
Oh, yeah, there's a lot of them.
Yeah, they live inside our power school system, and so, and so we do the rollover, or we don't know where they're at. Uh, and so you, if you look at that, those numbers, it actually shows more than our intended reduction, and so one of the things that we did is Chase and Amy and I looked at and said, okay, here's how many people will be left at the end of the school year, and here's how many openings we will have at the start of the school year. Can we make sure that all the people leave, which they'll know tomorrow, with a place? But by going through and doing that, there are still some unfilled vacancies that are out there. Uh, and so in, in years past, we've often filled them much earlier. We're gonna be a little slower to do that for the exact reason that you described, is we watch enrollment unfold, as we look at some of those classes that may have been one student over or one student under. Uh, we've got a couple of them out there in particular that, that they're just over the edge, and, and we've had that conversation at the table, is do you leave that FTE there? Do you move it somewhere else? And so we've had some of those conversations with the building principals and things like that, so.
The one thing I would caution everybody about is the RAM that's there tonight is not the RAM that we base the FTE allocations on, because we would've done that a couple of weeks ago. The RAM looks slightly different then, so if you're out in the public talking about that, there might be one or two off.
Yeah, this is the one we just pulled numbers for on Friday. So we pull the numbers every Friday, and we send it out to our elementary principals, and, and they, they now know, you know, don't run out and post a job just because it looks like you have one out there. It's, it's back and forth process, but at least it helps them understand where the trends might be looking, and if, oh, I might be, I might have to add here, I might have to reduce here, then let's start the dialogue.
We have to potentially hire some people?
We'll have, potentially have to hire some people, and one of the things that we, we dislike doing, Brady knows this, you know, is that we try to avoid showing up in somebody's room the week before school, school starts with a whole bunch of boxes and telling them they're moving. Um, so we'll be watching that over the course of the summer. Uh, but that remains more of a distinct possibility this year than perhaps any other year, just because we're so tight. Uh, and if, if they don't show up, the numbers aren't there, we may have to look at that as a, as a reality this year.
So in other words, if I understand you correctly, you've followed, the, the computer model has followed the class size limits, but what you're saying is that you might revert the model to-
Well, we might have to, I'm not singling on any particular school here, but if you drop down, you know, along with a couple of our small enrollment elementary schools have some really green sections in there. They're one student over. That, we may have to go back and manually adjust that. Um, we're, we just decided not to do it yet. We're gonna wait till we get a little bit further into the, uh, early stage.
So if the other students don't show up, you're, you're reserving that rate?
And we, we've shared that with the principals, and they know that.
In some of our schools, I would imagine we have patterns where we know they're un, you know, kids don't enroll until August or Labor Day.
After.
After Labor Day, so for those, I mean, I would imagine there are certain ones that pop up, and so just kind of reserving that, knowing that.
In the past, we've often staffed them now.
Okay.
Right, so we're betting that they're coming, um, and those of you that have been around and seen this over the last few years, you know, we went from being less accurate to more accurate. In the last few years, we've been maybe off a couple, you know, I can remember two or three years ago, we had a couple really small classes at Kirkwood because we staffed based on what our expectations were. The kids didn't arrive. It was the week before school started, actually, I think it was the week of school starting, and we decided not to move the teacher. We just left them there. They wound up in two very, very small classes, um, for that year. Uh, we're trying to avoid doing that. Uh, so things where we may have staffed prematurely, if you will, or, uh, in advance, we're, we're gonna hold off a little bit until we see the registration goes. One of the things that our, our principals have been really, um, very strong this year is they know that, um, so they've been really active in trying to get people to register. So if they know that you're out there and you're not in the system, we're gonna go ask you to make sure that you get your stuff registered. That's particularly true for our kindergarteners. Parents aren't, aren't always as aggressive when registering their kindergarteners, so when our principals know that they have a younger sibling in particular, they're much more vocal about seeing if they'll get them into the system.
And, uh, and continuing on a few things that I had, and I know I've spoken about this in the past, uh, I think there's opportunities for us to save some money with travel and to get a better, uh, accounting for travel and stuff. Uh, I think I've shared that with, you know.
Leslie's, uh, actually, I've, uh, Amy and Matt and, well, actually, the entire, uh, ESC team has been working on that, uh, Dan has been helping us out, making sure we get all our funding sources. Leslie had that, there was one of our federal ones that had to be broken out today, um, so I think we've got, finally got a final draft on that, and I'll have that out to you shortly.
Perfect, love.
We broke it down by federal, state, A D A, district, so you can see it by employee categories, of teachers, support staff, et cetera.
I, I think there's opportunities for us there, and also just to get a better, uh, read on the travel that we're doing, which ones are successful, which ones aren't, what we're gaining from, what we can implement, that type of a thing. Uh, also with the physical plant, um, you know, we're looking at all the categories, and to what Sean was saying, I, I look at this list too, and I say it's all core conferences, you know, and, uh, we said that we weren't gonna touch that. And, uh, I think that there are opportunities in the physical plant. Uh, grounds has exploded, and I understand we're adding grounds, but, uh, over time, in certain categories, we can keep a handle on that, recognizing that this is a year, two-year, uh, issue. Uh, there should be shared, uh, pain and sacrifice, uh, that way, especially when, uh, most of it's coming from, uh, instruction, instruction. And, and that's, that, uh, that concerns me, and, you know, with the grounds, it was, it was brought up, the, the moving of the buildings in the summer and things like that. We hear, we, anyone who watches local news sees communities where the football team chips in and helps with moving the library materials or things like that. Uh, we've got quarter of a million dollar weight rooms. Uh, we could, uh, you know, get them outside and help unload it, loading a truck and unloading it. I think we could, uh, uh, save ourselves some money that way and, and look to do that. And, uh, you know, extracurricular sports, I think we have to look at opportunities there and say, because when you, we had that report the, uh, summer ago where some schools have fourteen, fourteen coaches. I understand these are categorical areas and, and that, but, uh, I think we should be looking for, uh, opportunities, uh, and, uh, in the whole system. And purchasing too, I, I, and I know sometimes this is small potatoes, but small things add up to big things, uh, that way, um.
Uh, I thought Adam's blog, by the way, that he sent out today, his post, was very good, so if you guys haven't checked that out, he broke down what he did for reductions in technology, and, uh, I just enjoyed reading it, I guess.
It was sad that faxing might be reduced a little bit on that.
You still, are you still faxing?
What? That one's still recovered, but it was, Adam's was working.
What is fax?
Faxing. There was a one they're saving, faxing, like faxes.
Oh, we're not faxing anymore?
Are, I, yeah, there's gonna be better efficiencies with how we do faxes.
You know what, so I know it's, I know-
I know, I'm joking, 'cause I rarely send a fax.
There is, well, it's something with one of our providers. It's either work comp or one or the other that-
You have to fax.
You have to fax, and that's how we get our things, and so, I know, we have these fax lines set up at the ESC, and- Well, it's funny, 'cause every time I hear it, I was like, who got on AOL? What's going on? Like, what's the dialogue going on here?
That's funny.
It's, it's a requirement from, uh, one of our, you know, our federally mandated work comp programs.
We have been trying to figure out how to fax from our copier, and we were for a while, and then that went perflue, and we actually had to go out and buy a fax machine.
Oh, good lord.
Uh, to replace it, but, uh, I know he's working on trying to get rid of that so that we can actually fax from the copiers, but we're struggling to make it work.
I, I do wanna say thank you for.
Thank you, yeah, that, and, and legal, our legal representation. Uh, I think that there's opportunities for savings there, uh, as well.
I do wanna say thank you for addressing the Southeast Junior Orchestra especially, but also the Earth Space Science. I mean, the, the, as I said, I think a number of us said Tuesday, those were compelling statements around access to in-school lessons and, and that kind of thing, so I do appreciate you going back and working on that.
Is there any chance that teacher that's doing that could add on an early bird class?
Just doing Earth Space.
Or Earth Space Science? And then I know it's gonna be possible, where it would be.
I'd have to look at that, I don't know, contractually.
I know we struggled.
I'm not sure we do it contractually, but.
We struggled really bad the last time we tried it. I think it's a big look at.
So there, there is obviously a staffing implication to that decision. Uh, I mean, I think a positive one in terms of the person needing to stay in that position, but it was a position that was already, um, visiting multiple buildings. So it just, that does eat into the FTE a little bit, so I know you're kind of asking it with a smile, but that, that, it adds to the difficulty when we try to add on other sections. But, I mean, it's worth a look.
I just, it's, it's really, it's always hard for me when I see that you can, I mean, I'm assuming you're doing one section of each junior high, and it's so small a slice of where you can go into that class. And then they hit high school, and they only have seven hours to choose from instead of, well, not hours, but you know what I mean, seven periods as opposed to eight.
You're talking early word out of high school.
At a high school.
Yeah, they couldn't do it. I mean, that's just my gut. Um, you couldn't do three junior highs and an early word of high school because you got the travel.
And you could, you could weigh in on that.
That's a good.
We're on. I think quite enough is answered.
Just thinking outside the box.
You're at the question.
Negotiated agreement now.
Well, Brady, though, though, if you did add it at a junior high, then more of those kids that wanna be there could add it.
Yeah, that one I'd have to sit down and work the numbers out. The high school wouldn't work contractually, but junior high has potential. That's why I asked that, yeah. That is a, I'd have to just think through that.
If, if it's already, if the, so it wouldn't be an additional school in that case, so if the, if the FTE already exists and has space for another class, and just saying, like, if you could add that in, then, uh, then those kids could get that out of the way, then in high school, they don't have that extra space or extra science, and they're trying to double up on.
Yeah. I'd have to look at, I'd have to just sit down and think about the map of it in the minutes between the schools. I just don't know that one off the top of my head.
And I know there's the issue with I go the in-transportation and all that, and which school gets in, you know, all that, and maybe you have to rotate from year to year, I don't know, um, but, uh.
Yeah.
Worth asking.
Yeah, it is, I mean, it really is.
So, so if you can forecast the future for us, uh, what are we gonna be hearing when we actually, when the principals make their decisions? And next fall, when the parents come and it's class, because this is all very vague, and I know you told us why, but what are, what are we gonna hear from folks?
I think you'll see most of the operation looking the same as it does this year. Um, you'll see some increase in class sizes, just like we are at the elementary level. Uh, I think Brady made a good point before, because it happens every year. You get a lot of, a lot of kids, you get a bunch of kids, though, that'll sign up for multiple singletons. So all of a sudden now, when you start doing the schedule, they can't take all their singletons, so they have to pull out of something and go into something else. Occasionally, and maybe more likely this year than other years, if that number drops significantly, which sometimes we see that, some of those courses already are on in every other year rotation, so it might have to be delayed and offered next year. Um, that's not any different than you would see otherwise, but you might hear it because people may presume that it's connected to the budget and not simply to the scheduling process.
Yeah.
I think those will be the big things you'll hear, I don't know, Brady.
Yeah, I, I would say that. I think that there are things that we're going through now at the secondary level that we go through every year regardless of a budget.
Yeah.
And that's, it's, it is gonna be hard to keep those divorced from one another, uh, in those, you know, conversations. I, I'd probably echo Matt's sentiment that we don't want, we want some certainty on things. People wanna start building their teams, and this is true at the secondary level, it's true at the elementary level. They wanna know, you know, who are, who's my team, how can I get together yet this spring, make plans, you know, work together in the summertime and, and get rolling. So the decisions, you know, were, were later than normal for a variety of reasons, and, and that's okay. But I think that that, you know, to me, because there will be some disruptions we haven't anticipated, just like there are every year, but there's literally nothing any of you could do about that, and this is the way the system works.
Yeah, I, I think, I think when we talk about this on Tuesday, I think trying to articulate what the budget, what we're voting on and what we're settling in on versus those normal changes that would happen in any year that are unrelated to budget cuts. I think trying to articulate that some would be really good to set expectations for what people should or could be expecting going forward.
And, you know, one that we know that is uncertain right now at the junior high level, and then we've got this conversation, and we're not sure where we're gonna go with it, is family consumer sciences. We have three vacancies. We have no one left in the district that can teach it. And, um, and that was part of the question, and I think it was a good question, as we, as we look at, okay, where are those critical pieces that we already know that even if we plan for it and schedule it, if we don't have anybody certified to teach it, you know, what does that look like? And again, that's one of those what-ifs down the way, but, you know, we'll plan, like, we're gonna have people in those classrooms, and then Matt and I will just have to figure out how we're, how we're gonna get certified staff in there to, to cover those. But those, that's one of those that we know is top of mind right now, 'cause when we look at what's coming out of the colleges in the state, not very many candidates in, in those areas.
And that's a must, though, do I understand correctly, at junior high level?
Yeah, for our current program, it is, I mean, we're gonna have.
By law.
Um, not necessarily. Uh, the problem is the way it's built into our system, I mean, you're gonna have droves of kids in study halls if we can't fill those FCS classes, I mean, those are big time electives at the junior high especially. And so we have great urgency around doing that, they're popular, we have a lot of kids in them. Um, and so we just really need to get going on filling those positions, uh.
We're building new spaces in Southeast, so it should be nice to use.
Yeah, that's another good point, we build new spaces in different, you know, Southeast is one example, but in different, uh, attendance centers throughout the district too, so.
And, and to that point, on, on hiring and going after talent, um, I think it's important when you're looking at these and, uh, few new open positions that we have, that where possible, we should be looking for someone with ag education to be on, on, on staff, so we, we, we can get that science component, and we have someone with that, so we can plug them in that way. Um, today was the last day of the, of the Iowa, uh, FFA convention, and Ames is having, uh, is starting an ag program next year. Um, and, uh, in fact, they're, um, uh, cutting their, um, SDS courses at the high school level and putting this in because they see a greater benefit from it. And, and I'm, I'm just, I'm just putting that out there that when there's the opportunity, we need to try and, and, and get that so we have that on board. So, you know, we've, we've got just as many kids that are interested in taking the ethics course to take ag at liberty, and, but we can't provide that opportunity. And, uh, that's year-round curriculum, and many of the kids there are freshman sophomore. So that's your base for, and, and that's your, that's, uh, year-round curric- curriculum. It's four-year curriculum, that type of thing, building block. And, uh, I think it's important that we get that started because, you know, and I think, thanks, Steve, for sending this from the Iowa Business Council on, on Friday. I mean, we're getting it from all areas, that we need that hand, that hands-on curriculum, problem solving, uh, future-ready apprenticeships, all those things, and, uh, we've gotta be a part of it because, you know, dump on it, we, you know, we need plumbers and electricians and carpenters, uh, and tradespeople, uh, as, as well. So.
Any other comments or questions around the proposed updates on the budget?
So just thanks again. I know I shared this with our admin council today. Uh, we started talking about this in December.
I know, it's been a long haul.
Um, and you've been troopers and with us the whole process, every step of the way, we really appreciate that. Uh, I told the admin team today, I think, uh, this has been a significantly better process than the process we had in thirteen, fourteen. I think that's directly attributable to the fact that you've been with us every step of the way and been involved in that dialogue. Uh, it's been much easier for us collectively as an admin team to understand where the real pressure and pain points were in the process, and, and I think to make better decisions in the end, uh, that wind up with better results for our kids, so, thank you.
That's good. Okay.
Excuse me.
Own favor, aye.